I'll call the meeting to order. This is a meeting of the Hampton Board of Selectmen and the Board of Health being held in townhouse auditorium September 13th, 2021 at 6:00 PM. The meeting is being conducted in person and remotely using video conferencing technology. As allowed by Governor's emergency order of March 2020. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where we stand, one nation under God, in the real hope of liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. If anyone recording the meeting other than us, please indicate in some way. Seeing none, we'll continue as thirty minutes.
There are none.
Okay. First item on our agenda is Michelle.
LaBlessen.
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 LaBlessen, okay.
Welcome, Michelle.
You're welcome, Michelle. And she's going to speak to us about the crumbling concrete commission and the situation currently.
Okay. My first question is, do you have the copies? If not, I have copies for everyone, so I'm sorry. I'm here as a representative of homeowners group. And we are advocating for some help in the state of Massachusetts and similar to what's happening in Connecticut. Because as you can see from the cover page here, foundations in Massachusetts are looking like this too, not just in Connecticut. And it's all caused by mineral. If you go to page two, the mineral is called pyrotite. And it is coming from a quarry in our area anyway, from a quarry in Wellington, Connecticut, and a company from Stafford Springs, Connecticut, J.J. Modus Corde Foundations, using aggregate from that quarry. At the beginning of coming for them, they did not know that this mineral was there. And until a couple of months ago, there's no testing in Connecticut for it. So there was no way to know that it was in the quarry. So I'll use that information in a minute. But anyway, so here you see the piece of concrete on the left-hand side of that photograph has chunks of this aggregate in it. And what happens is it begins to rust once it's mixed with concrete and water and oxygen. And it starts this chemical process and this degradation of the concrete. The pyrotite expands and it cracks. And the more it cracks, the more it lets water in, and the more it lets water in, the more it cracks, and so on. And it starts lifting and going in the walls of the foundation. So the picture on the other side of that page is an actual photograph of a foundation in Wales. And we've been there with legislators to see it, and they could not wait to get out of that basement because it doesn't look like it's safe to be in, honestly. So to the next picture, this map shows you in red where pyrotite can be found. In Connecticut, it's at the tip of that middle section that goes from Massachusetts into Connecticut. That's where that came from that's causing this problem in our area. But as you can see, there is red that goes up into Massachusetts, particularly into Worcester County. It's very concerning because we are now finding homes affected by this in Holden, Rutland, Barry, Bracton. They've all been tested for the minerals mineral, and because the foundations are showing signs of this issue. Just recently, we've added a number of towns now to this map. So this map that you have on the next page, it's all highlighted in yellow, you'll see those towns. We can now add Spencer to this as well. And I am reasonably certain that those towns in between will eventually, when people start to come forward, that's a difficult thing to do. But when they do, this map is going to fill in more. In Connecticut, there's over forty towns affected, and we have over twenty already. We really just started, you know, getting people to come forward in the last couple of years. So on the next page, this is how our home's made whole again. Well, you'll see this home down in the bottom corner. That's what that home looked like before they realized they had a problem. It was beautiful. And then that home is lifted above that. And on this side of the picture, you can see the man that looks like he's standing on a Jenga game. That's called cribbing. That's how they support the home after, so that they can lift it off of the foundation, tear the foundation out and replace it. This home cost $280,000 to do that for.
To fix it.
Excuse me?
To fix that.
To fix it, to replace that foundation, because that is the only way to do this. When you hear companies trying to come forward saying, I can help you, I take care of concrete cracks, I can fill that for you, you'll be all set, that is a massive waste of money and really insulting to the person's emotional well-being, because this is really difficult for people to deal with. Imagine finding out that everything that you worked for your whole life, suddenly your equity is gone. You have none. When my husband and I found out, we went to Munson Savings Bank to see what we could Mortgage president said to us, well, there's not much we can do for you. You have no equity. The only equity you have is in the land. But if you want to knock your house down and start over, we'll give you a construction loan. My husband and I, I just retired, my husband's about to. We aren't financially able to get another mortgage at our age. And, you know, there are a lot of people out there that are buying homes right now without an inspection, waiting inspections in this crazy market that we have. I really hesitate to do that. Because if you are not having that inspection on that foundation, and if your inspector isn't familiar with this problem, a young couple starting out could end up with a home like this, and then they have this massive mortgage along with a home that's really worthless. I just can't imagine that happening. The rest of us that have been attending these meetings are largely people like myself nearing retirement and just found out that that nest egg that we hoped we had to, you know, sell it and downsize and be able to live comfortably for our retirement years is gone. It's pretty devastating because it's, you find yourself going in and out of denial. Saying, well, maybe my foundation is in there. Maybe mine will be okay. Then you find out, you know, I really should look into this more. And you have a structural engineer come in and maybe look at it. And ours said, good news, bad news. The news is ours is moving slowly, because we've done a number of things to mitigate the issue unknowingly. We had spring when we dug our cellar hole, so we had to put in an extensive footing drain. Still runs perfectly to this day, twenty-six years later. We backfilled the sand, we coated the walls, we run a dehumidifier, we've done everything we can, and yet we still have cracking happening. And so the bad news is, you're going to have to stay here because we're not going to be able to sell your house. Our son had wanted to buy our home and raise his family in the home that he grew up in, and yet the bus let us go downsize, but he can't get a mortgage for it. So it's kind of stuffy. So what do you do? You get a core tested to be sure. Of course, you get the structural engineer inspection, and you can see on the next page how they drilled for the core test. The company that we use, they came in and they drilled it, and we sent it down to Trinity College in Connecticut, and they developed a test for pyrotite. For two cores, you can, you spend $1,900 to find out whether you have a pyrotite in your foundation or not. And the state is reimbursing that at seventy-five percent up to $5,000, and they'll pay up to $400 on the structural engineer fee. But that's what we have in Massachusetts right now. So why are we advocating for help? Because there's no recourse. As I said earlier, there was, it's a mineral. It's a natural disaster is what this is, because it's a mineral in the aggregate that was mixed in to the concrete. As is normal practice, and there was no testing for the mineral. So there's no negligence on anyone's part. So there's no one to sue. They've tried in Connecticut and failed on that basis. There's no insurance coverage. Right, can I tell you, this is the part that bugs me the most. Pay your homeowner's bill, and just when you need it, foundations aren't covered. And six months before that we found out we had this issue, our homeowner's coverage was rewritten to, were worried that it would only cover a rough collapse of a home. If you have a reason that you knew of that could lead to a collapse, then you're not covered because you didn't mitigate it. For us, mitigating is going to cost $263,000. So it wasn't happening, and for most people, it can. We had nowhere to turn. So we turned to our legislators to find out if they knew about this and what was going on. We formed this group, because even now in Connecticut, they range an average price of $150,000 to $300,000 depending on the size of the home. So we started advocating. And the state formed a special commission in 2019, and we held a number of meetings and came up with recommendations and a special report. Here's the cover of the report. And then we had legislators come out and see it for themselves, because, you know, it's not real until you see it. It's pretty devastating. Like I said, we had aides that work for Congressman Neal and Senator Goby and Representative Ash all in the background saying, can I leave now? They didn't want to be in this house. So from the commission, after all that, we had a list in that report of all these ten recommendations. And of that, in Senate Bill 548, an act relative to crumbling concrete foundations, are these recommendations right here. And I just want to say a couple words about them. Property tax abatements will happen as residents in the town come forward and say, okay, now my house is worthless. Why am I paying the full boat of taxes on it? As a town employee at the time from the town of Munson, I had a real difficult time making that decision to come forward. But we had to start somewhere, putting a little pressure politically to say, towns are going to need this help, not just their residents, not just the homeowners. And it's true. In Connecticut, as homeowners came forward, the tax abatements had to happen, and our revenues went down. And when revenues go down from all of these homeowners, the other homeowners are going to have to pick up the difference. So it really does affect everyone. So that's a big part of this bill. And then eliminating permit fees for doing the foundation replacement, also because homeowners have already paid one way or another, either after the fact or in building, build a house, why should they have to pay for this permit again? Seller disclosures, so no unsuspecting buyer would be sold one of these homes. Such a morally wrong thing to do, but it's happening. And then beginning quarry standards. Testing for this mineral is absolutely necessary. Connecticut just passed a law a couple of months ago to start this, so we don't see this happening again. Because here in Massachusetts, as you saw from that map, we're pretty sure we have a quarry in the Worcester County area, because those people from Rutland, Holden, and Barry, it's very unlikely their concrete came from Stafford Springs, Connecticut, when they have a quarry and concrete providers right there on Oklahoma. So that's something that really needs to happen. The very most important thing to homeowners right now is to enable a captive insurance company to operate in Massachusetts. It's not like an insurance company where you buy a policy and it's covered. It is a mechanism to manage funds that are put in from the government. Connecticut has put money in, and they've also started a surcharge on every homeowner's policy, $12 a year, and that goes into the fund to help these homeowners. The captive manages the whole program, and that's what we need here. But Massachusetts law doesn't currently allow for that. So the legislation is meant to help with that, to get those things started. And then our last slide here is how can you help as a homeowner, as a neighbor, or as a select board member? We have been going town to town, and so far Munson, Wales, Holland, Brimfield, Sturbridge, Charleton have all voted to send a letter from the town, from the select board, to the joint committee responsible for the bill, as listed on this page here, encouraging a prompt hearing on the bill and that it be voted out favorably for further action legislatively. If it doesn't get a hearing, it doesn't go anywhere. And it's stuck even longer. And I'm going to tell you, this poor man in Wales doesn't have that much time before he's going to have to move out of his house, because he's retired and doesn't have the funds to replace it. So that's why I'm here tonight, to ask you as a board if you would do the same as the other towns and send that letter to that joint committee. And if you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
I have a question. Is that, did that company also make septic tanks?
Which certainly did. It was a large supplier of septic tanks over the last, those years. Homes affected in our area ranged from 1983 to 2015. This is when they stopped using the aggregate from that quarry voluntarily. They had written a voluntary agreement with the state of Connecticut.
So they used it between 1983 and 2015?
Yes. And it takes on average about twenty years for the cracking to show up.
Always a little mindset.
I know.
I'm doing it for my septic tank.
I'm going to tell you, if it wasn't so necessary for this to be done here like it is in Connecticut, I'm not sure I could do this, because I feel like the Grim Reaper. Everywhere I go, I come in and say to people.
Well, you're doing good work, though.
Yeah. Although, you know, it's...
Citizen activism is the most important thing.
I just, I had to do something. I couldn't just sit there and think this and then see all these other people affected. And, you know, my husband and I, we are not going to, if this happens, we are not going to be the first in line getting our foundation replaced, because ours is not the worst. Poor guy in Wales, I tell you. He needs his foundation replaced soon, and there's others like him. There have been, I know of three families, two in Charleton, one in Holden, who did this job, and one in Long Metal, excuse me, four, who did this job by borrowing from family, friends, retirement funds, no matter how, they found a way, but it has put off retirements. I mean, it's changed lives to be able to save their home because it had to be done. It couldn't wait.
Was Goby the one that initiated the S-548? Or was that someone?
Yes. Yes. She's been quite fantastic, I'm going to tell you. Between her and Brian Ash, I don't know where we'd be. They've been all positive.
Did Richie Neal say anything, any potential for federal funds for this?
Well, that's why this is so important right now. And Goby really feels like this is like the golden hour for us. Because of all this federal funding that's coming into the state, there's $5 billion in American Rescue Plan funds coming in. The estimate on what we would need for the homes that they expect, I know the number's probably going to go up because of the Worcester County issue, but they were figuring around 2,000 in this area, on an average of 175 cap, because that's what Connecticut did, it put it at a cap of 175 out there. It's all based on linear footage and square footage of the flooring rates per. And if you figure that, 2,000 homes at 175, that's like $350 million. Sounds like a lot until you say that's only seven percent of 5 billion. So now's the time. Now's the time to make this happen. So we're trying to show this committee that there is support amongst not just the residents, but from the town's point of view as well.
The chairman's got questions.
No, I think it's a terrific spot for us to endorse, you know, with our, obviously, other towns in this area. Commend Brian and Rep. Goby for taking the initiative of this, and of course Richie for coming back to his district occasionally. But again, you're right.
He did, but you can see he's not.
You are 100% right, you know, with that, and I hate to call it gravy train or whatever, but it shouldn't go to projects that are just feel-good. This is the project that helps the most people, and this is where that money went to. Rescue Plan, this is a rescue plan.
Yes, it is. And, you know, in Connecticut, not only did it help homeowners affected, it created a market. So at the beginning, when homes were costing $250,000 and more to replace a foundation, once the market was created, more contractors became involved with it, and next thing you know, the average price is down to like $158.
Well, and the money's going into local, as well. You're hiring the local guys to do the work.
Exactly. So now we have these companies working and employing people. It's a win for everyone, including the municipality that had lost all its revenue. So now they get all that revenue back, and the other taxpayers get a break. So it's...
And you see both sides, having worked in the Munson government.
Yes.
You really see both sides.
Yes, I do. And it really took a long go, and, you know, I spent a lot of time with our tax assessor, and she said to me, do not feel bad. You have lost the value in your home. Your home is no longer, it won't work what it was. We have to waive your taxes. It's the right thing to do. I said.
Chair, I'd like to make a motion to have the unnecessary right of support for this issue.
Second that. Do you have further discussion? All in favor?
Thank you very much. If needed, I can share a sample of what some of the other towns...
Those are the best.
Okay. I'm glad we did that.
And we will, we will make it even better, just starting.
And we're going to these email addresses here?
Yes. Yes, please. Appreciate that.
Thank you, Michelle.
Thank you.
Keep at it. Keep at it.
We will.
Thank you very much.
The next item on the agenda is the, it kept on the agenda, candidates for planning board appointments to join me with the planning board. I had sent a letter to the planning board asking them, suggesting to them that we meet jointly to interview the remaining three candidates and then discuss the candidates and pick two vacancies. I offered them a meeting this week or any other week, and also I offered a special meeting. I received a response today in which they weren't interested in doing that. They wanted to interview the candidates themselves and make a recommendation. They questioned my motivation for wanting to do this on two occasions in the letter. And the motivation's simple. It's the most efficient way to do it. Every other town does it that way. We have a responsibility as a select board to cast a vote, so it would be good if we could look at all the candidates at one time together and move on with the process. So we're left with three options. There was a couple of options. Number one, we can wait for their recommendation and rubber stamp it, which I will not do. Number two, we can interview all the candidates ourselves at some other time. Or number three, we can interview them individually, or we can attend their meeting on Wednesday night, sit there, have no input, and then see what their recommendation is. My question is, what if we decide that one of the people that we see in the interview we like better than one of the recommendations? How do we do that nomination? Or how do we get that person's name before the full board? We have to talk about that. It's, personally, it's very discouraging for me, because it's just, I don't understand it. I don't understand it, and I had hoped that we could do this in an efficient manner where everyone could see all the candidates. But apparently, there's some hesitancy to do that. One of the things they cite is precedent. Well, you know, they kept asking, why now? Why not? Well, why now? Because there's two openings, and we're in a time squeeze. So that's why now. And number two, what difference does it make? I was done. I know they have, and they pointed out that it hasn't been done in the past that way. No, and oftentimes, we're lucky we get someone to apply for a position. This time, we have six people, so it behooves us as responsible to leave the town to appoint the best person, and I'd like to look at all six of them. So what's your choice? We could wait till the 20th, see what their recommendation is. We can go off on our own, interview the six people ourselves. We can vote all six of them down and start all over.
I'm planning to go into the meeting on Wednesday just to listen to the other three candidates. We listened, well, I listened to the other three in Zoom meeting, so I have a knowledge of their background, but I'd like to hear from the other three, so.
Same here. I mean, I thought they were responsive. Don did send a list of questions he'd like to have the three, asked of the three candidates, and the chair did ask those questions. Don, you were in attendance, as was I. I know that last year, for instance, there was an opening on the planning board, and they had three candidates, of which the select board at that time did not make any effort to participate in the interview process then.
True.
And that was three down to one. Basically, we have the same three to one right now. So I do see that there is an avenue for us to participate in the process. They were certainly willing to ask these questions. I would certainly behoove us to attend the meeting, be participants in the discussion, see the other three candidates.
Well, we can't. We can't because we're not posted. And that would be a deliberation. So all we can do is listen.
Why can't we ask like we did before? We had, we attended the meetings for the storage units, ask citizens and ask questions. We can listen. If they're asking the questions we submitted, we're listening to those answers.
I believe the difference is in the storage unit there, is that we didn't, we don't have a vote. So it doesn't matter what we say at the storage meeting. I mean, we're just citizens there. On this particular occasion, we have a vote. So we would be deliberating on something that we have a vote on.
If we deliberated that night.
I think town council even advised that we don't interact.
I don't recall any, well, we got advice from town council, it wasn't shared with the board.
It was in an email to all of us.
Not to not go to the planning board interviews.
No, she didn't say that. She didn't say that. She said, what are the planning board interviews, but do not participate.
Right. Which is, as I said, you provided questions and asked them to go.
Yeah.
If you would like to go, as Craig and I said, you either plan on going or watching it on Zoom. That would allow one member to go if you look to participate, and we'll just watch what they say, but I think it's...
I just don't understand why they're adverse to doing this jointly when we all have a vote, an equal vote. It's just, it's just, I don't, I don't understand it, and I never will. And I understand, we haven't done in the past.
For any board.
No. School committee, we interviewed three people with the other school committee person there.
That's a different, that's under a different par, MGL. We had an opening at the assessors a couple of years ago where you and I didn't make an issue to say, Martin Rec as well.
Yeah. And the more I thought about it, I thought to myself, why? I know they think, I know what they think. They think it's some kind of power play, it's going to diminish their power and all, and the selectmen are getting into their knickers, and we're horrible people, they're questioning them. I mean, they got all upset because we got the audacity to make recommendations, which are required to by law. But, you know, we've got to get beyond that and do what's best for the town. What's best for the town is for all six of us to sit down and interview the people. It's not going to happen, so we're going to do it their way, and we'll see what happens Monday night when they bring these recommendations up. Mary Ellen?
Well, I was on the board when the last vacancy occurred, and I was uncomfortable at the time that we hadn't seen both candidates. But I was new to the board, and I was probably remiss in not bringing up my concerns at that time. But I think anytime you're in a position where you're voting, and both boards are voting this decision together, that you should have as much information as you can possibly get to make the most intelligent decision and the most independent decision you can get. I think that gives the public more confidence in the decision, and I think that it makes you feel that you've done your job. So I would, you know, I don't have any say in what's going to happen, and I don't, you know, my position doesn't make much difference, but at least I have expressed it, and I think that it's shared by a number of people that think that informed votes are better than uninformed votes. And you get informed when you talk to the person.
No, we just had one other thing. I think that if we're going to move the town forward, everyone has to get out of their silo and start thinking about the bigger picture. That's all I have to say. So Wednesday night's the meeting. They've got a couple of things on their agenda. Monday, they say they're going to make their recommendations, and we'll see what the recommendations are, if we agree or don't agree. But I do need you to find out if, what would be the process of doing this? Who's chairing the meeting? And number, and number two is, what if one of us decides that candidate D is better than their A and B? How do they...
I've got an opinion, but if they join your meeting, you're the chair. If the selectmen join their meeting, their chair is in charge of the meeting, so.
Okay. But I do need you to find out if, is, what would be the process of doing this? Who's chairing the meeting? And number, and number two is what if one of us decides that candidate D is better than their A and B? How do they?
I got an opinion, but if they join your meeting, you're the chair. If the selectmen join their meeting, their chair is, is in charge of the meeting, so.
Okay.
So it depends on who, who joins what, who joins which meeting. So if they join the selectmen, I assume you're the chair. If the selectmen Wednesday night join their meeting.
Jack, uh, John's the chair.
John is the chair.
All right. On Wednesday night, we also do have a bit of a conflict. Concom is also meeting and they're discussing the main street water as well. I think, uh, if it's appropriate, I would typically, well, you're the Concom.
Yeah, okay.
However, I can, I've been hunching on your project as well. It's up to you, which, would you prefer? I go to that one?
I, I want to go to the planning board one.
All right. So, and honestly, Craig, if you are watching via Zoom, we don't have a conflict. We don't have an attendance problem at that point. You know, if you share questions that you'd like to have asked that are any different than ones that's here in the past. I think, as Don said, you want to move it forward. So there's ways we can make it a conflict rather than impediments. Actually, that's, so they're going to be at the school and Concom will be here. How are we going to handle the Zoom issue? Bob, you only have one Zoom account for the town.
Uh, yes. Uh, Conservation Commission has a Zoom account. So that, uh, I have to talk with Bonnie tomorrow to have them set up a session with their Zoom account, so.
And the intern, intern goes where?
Pardon?
Who gets the intern? No, seriously.
Well, I have a discussion today.
I think they're less experienced than, if you're going to be at.
I think they, they get the intern and I'll, uh, I'll show up at the, the planning board.
They need a microphone at Thorntonburgers still.
We have one. We have a second microphone.
Like a side microphone.
Oh, one of those, okay.
Am I right? It was very difficult to hear.
Yeah, that'd be good for town meeting as well. These are things we should be looking ahead to town meeting. Uh, Bob, speaking of that, I mean, is there a projector? I mean, that would be good for any meetings for where we have applicants that want to do screen sharing.
Well, I'll see what I can do for Wednesday night.
Best of mine.
Work on, yeah, okay.
All right. Thank you. Onward, fire station expansion. Did you guys tour on Friday? I had.
We did. I'd have to say, uh, you know, I think Wilberham was excellent host. We learned quite a bit over there.
Very informative.
Very informative. A little better situation than the limitation that we saw at East Long Meadow because they were space limited with that footprint.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Wilberham, I think, was able to take advantage of theirs. I think connectivity that they had with their police station worked out better. Maybe because both projects were newer and the police station went in later, Craig. I then could speak to the fact that certainly from a digital standpoint, it was much better managed over there.
Yeah, everything's laid out. And I like the way that they flowed too, because they wrapped their facility around the bays. So no matter where you were in the bunks, the kitchen, you had access to a truck immediately, without having to run down a hallway and bump into somebody.
To get back to Don, your point about the mission is to get out to the truck. And they really put that at the forefront of what they did. So the layout there was very good.
I will say, out of both facilities we, we visited, they both said that they wish they had a bigger space. Because they're, they're running out of space.
Who didn't say that? Who didn't say that at home?
We did a bigger house.
A, a good country.
And then I think both East Long Meadow and Wilberham were heavily into the EMS field. So they, they both have more of their daily calls or EMS really.
I think we'll get a chance to go see Munson shortly.
Munson? Where are we at with Munson?
You tell me. They're happy, happy to accommodate you and have it.
Perhaps, uh, Thursday would work out well for me if it would be gentlemen.
Tuesday and Boston. Thursday would be good.
As long as it's early.
Early.
Before, you know, like the same thing, 11 o'clock, 11 is good.
11, 11 Thursday. That'll be it. Make it so. All right, I'll do it then. Okay. We have our financial team here to talk about the special town meetings. Warrant articles.
Everyone but Cliff, who certainly wished the best for Cliff for his recovery. Is he on Zoom though?
He on Zoom? Cliff on Zoom? Uh, no.
I'm sorry, I see Eddie here. Ed, did you have anything to add on the fire station thing?
No, I think everyone's something off the top.
See a few words, I like that.
So you have a packet with warrant articles. And on the inside, the second page, I think is, I think what everyone's looking for, and that is, the requests, uh, of various departments uh, for additional spending, uh, mostly capital spending. And, uh, the cost of that versus the savings in the police budget because of the consolidation uh, with dispatch. Uh, the police budget will save $216,123.
One thing, Bob, I had a conversation with Cliff in regards to the, uh, the upgrades for street signs, et cetera, that we're using the gaming money for. He feels that in his conversation with Jim Pedolick, we may need to appropriate that money and use the gaming money as basically just revenue coming in. I thought that'd be part of your conversation with Mary when you have that Zoom call, but.
It was not, no. Uh, what they asked for was some traffic studies. I asked the chief of police and he gave us all the data that they have on Allen Street and Summers Road, including accidents. Uh, they are also aware that, that the DOR gave the town $25,000 to design a sidewalk from the senior center down to the commercial district. And they wanted a copy of that. Uh, so I, I tried to find an electronic copy. I, I couldn't find it, so I asked Ty and Bond and they sent, sent an electronic copy of that.
Well, I think what Dick is saying though, is he's saying the expenditure per Pedolick, you need to appropriate it. You can't spend it directly from the gaming money. So that might be something you want to like canvas back with.
Oh yeah, I'll talk with her. Um, we, the, the Gaming Commission is going to meet on the 23rd uh, to make a decision on our proposal. Uh, there's a two-step process. I submitted the proposal back in early June. They had a leisurely summer, I guess. And, um, there's a committee that has to review and make recommendations. So that's already happened. They asked for this additional information. And the Gaming Commission itself is going to meet on the 23rd and make a decision.
Right. And I think that would just speak to the fact that our, our submittals are qualified. I think we're just talking about here how the money handles.
And if we have to, we have to appropriate the money and get reimbursed.
Well, that's what, that's what Cliff said in his conversation with Pedolick. Dick may, may.
I spoke to Cliff on the Friday. He's concerned with what he was asking for is to put a placeholder warrant item, warrant article item while he converges with DOR.
Okay.
The steps that you're talking about have to do with the qualification.
Yes.
He's worried that DOR wants us to transfer money from the incoming.
Okay.
You know, it, it's certainly boilerplate. And he's trying to get more information from DOR.
Yeah.
But if we just, we put it, before we finalize the warrant,
Right, okay.
Put a little placeholder for that one, just to make sure that we test the audits.
And that's the question now, do we need one for each thing? We bought one thing, we bought another thing? Or basically, I mean, one placeholder for traffic improvements based on gaming reimbursement?
Well, we certainly could do it all under one article in a motion without the figure out if it has to be more detailed.
Okay, good.
But we got a few weeks to figure it out.
We put the whole hundred thousand under that one hundred and four?
Okay.
We put the whole hundred thousand under that one hundred and four?
Well, we haven't expended. That's going to be the next question. Do we have to do it every time we expend something from the hundred? Right now, we have bills totaling up that we're going to have some money left, right, Bob?
Oh yeah?
Yeah. So do we have to go back later?
We may have as much as half left.
To, to.
Get authorizing money out of this, basically kidding what you want.
Well, one of my favorite politicians does a great answer, question deserving of an answer.
Thank you. Email me. So I think it might be that we're only spending, and Bob might tell me, say $60,000 out of the hundred right now. A subsequent year, we know we have forty. We might need a warrant article to authorize $28,000 out of our gaming reserve money for this road.
All right, let's run down. So what, what, what do we need to do? Let's just do the easy things.
Can I just get a clarification on the date?
Yeah, I was just saying, it's not October 8.
Eighteenth.
Eighteenth, thank you. Right down below also. October 8. Wow.
Eighteenth.
Okay.
The system deleted the one.
Is that it? It's Chinese, I'm telling you right now, Bob. They're better security. What, uh, now looking at these dates, what's your field? Have you targeted a date for closure and does advisory have a date?
So if we're, we stick to our Monday routine, and Monday prior to this is Columbus Day, I believe. So it's likely we need to have our advisory hearing on, um, the 4.
Okay, 4.
So that, so.
October 4. That's, that's like.
That'd be our timeframe in terms of needing to get some resolution to all of this pretty quickly.
Yeah, so I think, you know, if we, if we targeted the 27th for closing the warrant, which, I don't think, Don, we really anticipate much more going on here.
September 27.
Yeah. Take a formal vote to close. I think, you know, you want with this thing here, you want to take a vote to close it right now. We just, we don't have to like, that allows us to dress it up and whatever. Maybe even the 20th or not yet.
Let's leave it on 27. All right. Uh, let's, let's, let's look at the, so the assessors clarification change. Yeah, we're going to go, we're going to do the easy stuff first. Easy nose first. Okay? Let's see. Is that figure correct? Which is that? Assessors classification change. That would put her where?
Grade six, step eight.
You spoke to that last.
Grade six, step eight.
Yes, that's, that's what I requested, uh, at minimum, yes.
And she's currently a grade six step?
She's not currently in a step. She's one of the couple of employees that was hired about the same time they were doing this study during that time period. And so she was just hired at an hourly rate, agreeable hourly rate. And, and when the chart came back, um, we never, or, or whoever, didn't place her in a a step. They put her in a, they, they identified her grade, but not a step. And so they added a 1.5% COLA to whatever she was making. So she was never really put on the chart.
Yeah, actually, that's not technically true. She was given a step, but it came in at a rate lower than her current rate. And for those people, they were just given a COLA.
That's correct.
Yeah. So there is a step. I don't remember what it is. I can look it up, you know, on the machine, but obviously this was an increase in the step.
Okay.
Education law.
And for the reasons you, you mentioned at the last meeting, this is, you're making the case, this is an appropriate step in grade four. This is important.
Right, I'm saying, when we would be considering hiring somebody like that, we would take into consideration some of that experience anxiety down by that she brought with her when we hired her. That weren't taken into consideration placing her up on a step that below what she would actually be.
In, in the packet, there are, I think, three email messages that I received from the board of assessors about this matter. I think there's one there from the principal assessor also.
So, all right. So do we need a vote on that?
Technically, we have warrant articles that come from other, as a courtesy, we allow boards and commissions to put warrant articles on. It's their job to do that. We can give our recommendation at the advisory hearing, you know. But I think Doug and Carol would agree, that's typically been the policy. If, if a board wants to put a warrant article on, we allow it. If it's not egregious, the budget.
That's been the ordinary course.
Yes.
She's a grade six.
And it's up to them, Don, to get up and make their case.
Yeah, all, all messages requesting changes were saved and are, are in here.
And I want to do the calculation here, move the COLA.
That's 38, 89. So I guess my point is we have no objection to it.
So you're going on the warrant, right? Yes.
You will just not take a vote on this?
No, no, my point is, we, as a courtesy, I mean.
Yeah, I know.
So we can make that point at the advisory hearing or the town meeting.
This has to plan it, but yeah.
Advisory will take a vote, make a recommendation to our town.
Fine, okay.
Okay, so.
We have no objection, great.
I submit my own, uh, warrant article request for that, as would any other department that might be seeking a sort of request.
Right. In the same.
As opposed to one. And that's why I, I wrote what I did, was I wasn't sure if you were going to do it as a group. Say, okay, these, we've identified as issues, see how the town votes, or each individual department present their, their individual issues.
Sure, sure.
So I will write my incident, thanks.
All right. Uh, building classification.
You'll just raise the values of everybody to pay for it, right? Any homework?
Yes, we can, oh yeah.
Well, building, building classification change.
Backup material in the packet for that as well.
That was where the board voted one way and then voted again back.
Okay, but on that one, on that one, we have to do that one because we're.
Right, and I've asked those two.
He wouldn't, he wouldn't.
I brought that forward. It's not the building commissioner, it's strictly the admin assistant.
Actually, that's not what this, what the backup material says.
Yeah, I know, and that's why the, the.
You said it's a backup material, all there is is two motions in an article. Is there any other supporting documentation that would help the advisory make a decision on that?
We'll put that together, but at this point, it is strictly just the admin assistant, not the building commissioner.
Uh, yes, I can give you a packet, which I didn't include tonight because it's thirty some pages. And, uh, we were.
Okay. So you're saying the motion that's on this piece of paper will not be made?
Who wrote that? Was that the motion you wrote, Norman?
No, this is not. No, this is, uh, something in the back, before the back, Bob gave us. It's one article and two motions to change three different salary lines.
Can I ask a clarifying question around the process related to the Collins report? So this is all, you know, it's like corrections to what came through the Collins recommendation that we all, you know, improved last year. So these exceptions now, what, what's the precedent this is setting? Change these, um, uh, grades for some staff that are different than what Collins recommended?
And that's kind of a question I think I had for board as well. In the past, we had a personnel committee that would work with, either prior to or work with the town administrator to resolve these issues. We really haven't defined going forward. We're not going to go out and call every time we have a question. We have to be able to find some way we can accommodate rate changes, step changes within our own.
Well, and there needs to be some central filter for that. Each board can't just decide that they want to take a shot and make a change because then we're going to be back where we were last year or the year before with, you know, being every which way.
Right.
So I thought that there was something embedded in the Collins report, and I may be wrong, that, that had a process for that, whether it was through the town administrator or through the board, something. And I just can't recall what it is, but I, I don't want to lose sight of a process we might have established.
There is, there is a process in, uh, the employee handbook. And I won't read the whole thing, but a department which wants to have a position reviewed, they do so annually. They have to submit a position description questionnaire to the administrator, who then goes through a process with that.
So did that happen for each of these, or are we just looking at the?
No, but, uh, the, the, the position description questionnaire, at least I can't find it. It, it may have existed, but I don't have a copy of it. So I was thinking today that, and, and I, I was refreshing myself on this this afternoon. And I thought, well, I gotta go find that position description questionnaire, get it out to the departments that would like to have reviews.
Yeah, I think if you can't find that, Bob, because that might be them referencing kind of the old system that they're using, is there's some format that Collins used that we can duplicate.
Yes.
So that gives you the information you need in order to make an informed decision about making these adjustments. I, this, I don't wanna.
Why aren't we making these adjustments because they were misclassification?
But who, who says they're misclassified? Is my question.
Well, then we don't have to do it.
I bet, just, they might, they might be, but I don't know this documentation to demonstrate that they were, that there's been an evaluation as to whether they were misclassified. Did Collins come back and say, oh, yeah, you're right, we missed out staffer? Did they go to Collins this time, or did they just go to Bob, or?
Well, I think Collins has wrapped up, basically, but, but there is, in the packet, some email messages that went back and forth to Collins from individuals in various departments that wanted to have their grade or step reconsidered.
They did review the library one.
Right.
You know, that was a Collins approved grade change, if I'm not mistaken.
Yeah, right. And that, that material's in here, too. That, those messages from Collins are in this packet.
Right, and just like when Norm last week presented what he felt were, I wouldn't say flaws, but inconsistencies with how they evaluated other communities against our community, and that, that's, and that documentation, I think, is in the folder as well, that they really, really looking apples to apples. And they're summarizing Norm correctly, or.
I guess, maybe, you know, I just got this tonight, so I've had a chance to look at it, but, you know, Norm's a pretty articulate guy and pretty persuasive when he gets in front of you. And so, so he may be able to justify that. Another department that wants to make the same case might not be. And I don't want it to be based on who's at the table, but based on some, you know, kind of, you know, impartial evaluation process.
I will say to the building one, I'm not sure where, I did already speak to, there's one article and two motions. The first motion, as I told Hobie, is just labeling. He would like to label instead of saying on the salary one, five point one, to say building commissioner instead of building inspector.
That's why I just make a motion, raise inappropriate.
Raise inappropriate, the misclassification. There is no money to it. He didn't understand. That's just how you guys type. He feel.
The, the other thing is you're doing your research on this. Be careful on steps versus grades. You know, the step thing we talked about in Kelly's case and actually in Hobie's case, when I first met with you people when I was doing the data crunching, that the step system that we implemented here, that the, the boards like when voted to implement, may have failed some people who have additional educational requirements. By pointing out Kelly and Hobie at that time, that's where that was real. Doing grade changes without a process, that's a little scarier.
Just quickly with Hobie, under state statute, he is a building commissioner, because he did the schooling and he is certified. But he is not a local inspector any longer, so making the, the change in his title makes sense.
But he wasn't looking for an increase in dollar amount, change in the title of the chief.
So.
This year, I will say, this year.
So the, the entire twenty-three sixty-four is an appropriation for the clerk position?
Right.
Okay, thank you.
And then the library one, you said you had.
Library, actually, this, this is a holdover from this, from the annual town meeting. These figures were finalized shortly before, I mean, minutes before town meeting. So the agreement with library was that we could push it over to the fall rather than change all of our numbers for town meetings.
And this is retroactive to the start of the fiscal year?
I just go back to July one. My understanding is this was done in Ariel, and I believe it was involved with, this actually was a Collins input.
Yes.
Is that correct?
Yep.
All right, let's do something easy. Police cruiser.
Police cruiser will cost fifty-three thousand, thirty-nine thousand for the vehicle, thirteen for the lights and equipment. Also, we should keep in mind that they turn in the old vehicle, and they do get some value from that. The chief, I had a conversation with the chief, he said, normally we look for seven thousand, but we don't think the, the, the vehicle with over a hundred thousand miles is gonna bring us seven thousand dollars. It's not quite a jalopy, but it's probably in the range of three to four thousand.
So why are we buying this? Does we place a what?
We have three cruisers that are over seventy-five thousand right now.
A police cruiser was authorized at the annual town meeting, which he will be ordering, or maybe has already ordered, and should be delivered towards the end of the year, the calendar year. Uh, it will replace a police cruiser that will have over a hundred thousand miles. And he's requesting a second car to replace another cruiser, the, the second mainline cruiser, that will also have over a hundred thousand miles by the time of expected delivery. You may remember that last year, he ordered a cruiser, I believe in November, it was supposed to be delivered in January, but because of COVID, chip shortage and whatever, production was delayed and it wasn't delivered until July of this year. So this would replace two frontline cruisers that will have over a hundred thousand miles when the changeover occurs.
If we don't take advantage of this window, we'd be looking at next May, and the delivery of that, even assuming that we don't ask for next May, would be the end of the following calendar year, and you'd probably be looking at a hundred and twenty thousand on that car at that time, Bob.
I'm sure they will, yeah, I'm sure they will.
Yeah.
Do you know if the police cruisers are gonna get first priority in the assembly line? Because I think GM was just shutting down some of their.
Yeah.
Well, the biggest problem is chips. I think you.
Right. But are, are they gonna get priority, is my question, you know, to be on hand?
Also, the department is changing over from Ford interceptors to Chevy Tahos. Uh, one reason for this, according to the former chief, is that they're experiencing that Chevy Tahos will last four years typically, rather than three. That's what I was told. And one downside to this is that the equipment can't be transferred over. In the past, they were able to use the equipment for several vehicles. Now, when you transfer, the old stuff from the Fords can't be transferred to Chevys, so you gotta buy, you have to buy new lights and equipment for each new vehicle. Hence the thirteen thousand.
I just, just quickly, the capital planning has been trying to get a handle on criteria that's being used to replacement vehicles. Historically, used a hundred thousand as the trade-in figure. And as a result of some comments made a couple of years ago, and actually, I believe it was at the advisory hearings, we've been looking more closely at whether or not that should be a higher figure. And I think, I don't know, has my data come back yet?
Yes, I have the new day, the data that you have on that twenty-year vehicle replacement sheet is from April. I have just this past week, new updated mileage data from the police department.
I, I raise it simply because there may be a recommendation in the not-too-distant future to revisit that issue of the hundred thousand miles.
About the last major change, Doug, if I'm wrong, was when the, not the, the warranty number really went up higher. You know, we were seeing the power train go from a sixty-thousand-mile warranty up to almost a hundred, and that's when we said, that's your big number. Now let's keep the cars to win. Okay, the tranny goes out, now we're spending big bucks. I don't think they're past.
My recollection also is that we were advised by the previous chief that anything over a hundred thousand, the trade-in value dropped dramatically. So that, you know, it was a cliff. I'm not so sure that that holds true any longer, so it's, it's something that.
Probably should be rolled on to the court part.
Yeah, so anyway, I bring, I bring it up just so that, you know, if, if there's other recommendations, it's.
Uh, the updated mileage data will be reflected in the report that's given to the capital planning committee a week from tomorrow.
And I think it's, you have to balance that, as I said, against Bob's talk about the delivery dilemma. You know, if we're gonna wait another full year for a car, is that the best thing at this point? Maybe we go ahead and bite this car now, but take a pause in, in April at the annual town meeting.
Municipal light plant. The town has been exploring bringing fiber optic internet service and making it available to all residents. This is something that has been done mostly in Berkshire County, but more recently, it's coming into Hampden County. West Springfield just signed a contract to do it townwide. Westfield is now, I think, eighty percent wired townwide. This would give residents an alternative to the cable company, if they chose. They could get internet service and then pick a streaming service if they wanted. It's costly. It does have a lot of advantages in terms of giving residents choice, also at a time when many people are working remotely, particularly younger people who are often engaged in tech-type industries. Uh, this would allow them to live in Hampden, work remotely, and have a fast connection to the internet. There's now federal money, a lot of it, coming out of Washington for broadband services. In fact, it's one of the three identified categories, water, sewer, and broadband, in the infrastructure bill. There's another infrastructure bill coming, I think, soon, that has even more money. The governor is also putting more state money into opportunities for broadband for cities and towns. You may know about the Community Compact Program? That was a program that we used basically to fund the classification and compensation study, as well as ClearGov. He has added a new category, this, uh, this round of, of, uh, grant, this grant round, he's added a new category for broadband. And so this is something that's happening, and I don't know that anybody, certainly the board has not made any decision, but it's being explored. And so we, uh, we had actually Whip City Fiber come into town today. Selectmen have contracted with Whip City Fiber to bring internet service into the building to replace Spectrum and Charter. It's gonna be faster service, save a little bit of money after the installation. Uh, and so that's.
But the municipal light thing is.
I'm sorry, yeah, I'm.
It's just a paper, it's just, in order, if, if. Paper, paper thing, it costs no money, so that we can get the grants, if we decide to do it.
Right. If the town decides to go forward, it must adopt a bylaw establishing something called a municipal light plant. Now, we're not gonna create a municipal light plant, but that's the terminology that's used. You have to submit that to two town meetings. We, we're gonna have it on the fall, and we'd have it in May. It has to pass the town meeting by two-thirds vote. Uh, I don't have the article now, the language is gonna be, the legal language is gonna be provided by town council.
So this is not a money article?
Not a money article.
No, no money. We're just giving Bob a different half the way.
Okay, police budget adjustments, uh, going down, but we still have, we're still negotiating, so it'll be a little bit changed, we don't know what.
Do you think that will be solved by, um, during, by October fourth?
I, I've requested that of them, and, you know, that I'd like to have that done by then, because I'm, I'm not a big retroactive pay guy, so.
We are also in negotiations for a new contract, replace the one that expired, expired June thirtieth, and also.
Yeah, I have all the confidence in the world, we'll be done with that. Okay, match for small bridge program.
Uh, you have a lot of material on that. Uh, the town got a grant last year to conduct a study looking at parts of town that were vulnerable to severe weather events, particularly flooding. And as, as the consultants looked at the town, they, they saw that the, the area most prone to flooding is over at East Main Street, where Big Brook and East Brook flow into the Scantic River. And in the process, uh, we were over there looking at the culverts, and we saw that the bridge, that East Main Street Bridge, uh, had considerable spalling of the concrete, and it's old and should be replaced. And so this, uh, we then applied for a grant from the Commonwealth of thirty-four thousand dollars to do the design for the project. The design is probably gonna cost, they estimate around sixty-four thousand. And so the state is basically saying, you have thirty-four, we think it's gonna cost around sixty-four. The town, it needs to come up with a share of this. So, and they estimate thirty thousand dollars. So you have, I think it's particularly telling to look at the pictures in that packet, the pictures of the bridge and the culvert area. You can see the deterioration. And if the town is going to take action to avoid future flooding, it seems to me that that's the place to start. Once we get the design done, the town can get one hundred percent funding under the small bridge program. The, the dimensions, Mark mentioned, uh, measure the dimensions, and the small bridge program applies, correct? Mark?
What that one is. Small bridge, uh, de-transfer conservation restriction for Marisco.
Basically, we need to, the land that the, the state has asked, endangered district part, endangered species district, has asked us to mitigate that by using another piece of town land under a conservation restriction. And that's what they're asking for. Remember, we had the adjacent, I believe it's the ninety, the partial townhome to the, uh, the land project. You know, that language, I think Rose is working on with, uh, probably Bob.
No money.
No money. Legal fees.
Yeah, assessing the apartment, we did that, building the plan, we did that. Uh, community preservation committee articles, anything there?
I've gotta put together a meeting.
Are we doing?
Excuse me?
We're gonna do the, uh.
Well, I mean, historical has requested to bring forward the historic register in. They have the meeting this past Thursday, I think you worked on it, right? I think it's ninety-two hundred, I think it is, in C P A nine. The library may also have a request, but I'm gonna speak to Alan and see if that's something that's really pulled over.
Uh, library classification took care of that. Highway department.
I'd like to see those split into two articles, trucking and excavators.
Trucking and excavator. What were you doing for a truck?
That would be a replacement of an F-250 with an F-250 board, an F-250.
Do you want to know what color? This is why I'm gonna roll it down to the parks.
It says standard Ford single color. How much, what's this?
Uh, forty-three.
So this estimate that's in here is different?
So.
Says thirty-nine in the estimate.
For Ford, not to a T forty-three, that was the latest quote I've received. Um, and that is for a twenty-three, because from what I've been told, uh, they cease, they, they don't make the twenty, they don't make the twenty-two anymore, they stop making them because of the chip shortage, so they're already onto twenty-threes.
So the, the quote from May is no good? The one that's in our packet?
Ziggy's got.
I'm sorry, no, so then there's, there was, down at the bottom.
Oh, if twenty-three?
Yeah.
I think Ziggy Taff's got a plus over Model A we can get, probably doesn't even use a chip.
You're getting a plow with this one?
Uh, yes.
Does the old plow work with it, or do we?
It, what, I'm sorry.
So we're talking about turning the old one over to the park department, are they gonna take ownership of the plow part and all that, and basically?
I think so, I, yes. Um, the way they, they, every, every few years, they like to, they like to change the, the design of those plows, whether they make a three-wire to a two-wire, uh, they'll do something subtle so that you.
Got the bay door.
Yep.
So, um, we do have one of those, so that one could go with the truck.
All right, a rubber track excavator also.
Hold on, do we need this truck?
We're at the mileage point, we're looking at, rolling up to a point where historically, we've traded over that truck.
How many miles you got?
It'll approach seventy or something at that point, Mark?
I believe so, yes, I can, I can confirm that.
Sounds like a lot of miles.
Right, and we had, but we had the need for Parks Department, so we said we would consider the request, President, getting the truck, roll down the next one.
So really, it's a Parks Department truck?
Well.
It could be, it could be, sure. Um, I, I can just say too, I mean. Just. I can just say too, I mean, just, if you have an O8, it's an O8, these trucks take a tremendous beating, you know, especially during the winter.
You use these for the small plowing as well, right?
Oh, yeah, those are, they're different around town cleaning things up.
I mean, to ask you, the typical, the typical then damage for a truck like that, how is the tranny and something like that? You say it's got $60,000, but it's got $100,000 basically in transmission.
I was told once that you should, you should, whatever the miles are, because it's a type of vehicle, type of, you know, work it's in, you could multiply it times three.
Oh, three, wow.
Those trucks don't spend much time driving down the dirt bike.
No, back and forth.
It's the back and forth that kills them, yeah. Especially those new 10 speeds.
So it'll be fine for the...
Excavator.
So this was a thought I had. I wasn't originally asking to have this go through town meeting, more so maybe through one of the grant programs, if it was eligible. But I think, I think it's time, you know, after going through the process of either renting a machine or hiring the machine out, I think it's time for us to have our own, have our own machine. Something this size, it's a, would benefit the town greatly, because, you know, it's under 10,000 pounds. All of our employees would be able to run it legally under their licenses. And also, to trailer it, none of the employees would need a Class A driver's license. We could trailer that with an F-250 or our one-time dump truck, just to keep that weight down, so that we don't have to, you know, have a Class A driver's license. So I know a lot of towns are going for these smaller machines, and really, this...
Let me ask you this, in terms of like a bang for the buck, if you were renting one, how much are you spending on an annual basis to rent around this size?
Well, we'll say it's, I can tell you it's $1,000 a day.
So what does this do?
So, this...
Besides dig holes?
Trenches.
Ditches, the price that is on the quote includes a couple different types of buckets to do our, you know, I mean, we can do anything with it. And it also includes a flail mower attachment.
How about an auger? Is that something, or use a small tractor for that, no?
We don't have an, you mean a post holder? No. I'm not sure we would really, you know, any defenses, no. But I did include the brush cutter, because, you know, we can do behind the guardrails, we can do the slopes, we can do the backsides and ditches, and really, that machine could be out on a daily basis.
Side of the park, transfer the park.
Speaking of excavation, have you done the piping at the park yet?
Oh, we haven't. It is, it is nearing wet, and it has been. I have the pipe for that now, and I'm just waiting for it to dry up.
So the extra $8,000 on the warrant article is for...
That would be for the trailer. This price does not include a trailer. If that's, I think that's what you...
Yeah, I saw 69 and the change, and then 78 on the...
Oh, right, yes.
So I didn't see anything about a trailer.
Is this a capital plan, planning look at machine thing?
We talked about that at our meeting, you know, what is the limit for? Basically, it's just, you know, that's why dump trucks are capital planning. We felt like an F-250 is almost the cost of doing business, that thing.
I mean, there was a time not so long ago when we considered police courses to be capital expenditures.
Right.
Now they're just ordinary operating expenses.
Right.
An item like this kind of falls right in that gray zone.
Yeah.
It's like getting a new mower, a new chipper, a new, you know, it's what they need to get the job done.
Is this going to save money from renting?
Considerable.
How often do you rent?
Well, I try to keep the rentals, rentals down to once a, once a year for a month or two from Tyler Equipment.
So like you rent it every day for a month, so it'd be like $30,000?
Well, no, I'll get a better deal for that. For that type of rental. But then to sub out a machine was an operator from a low-hole, you know, low-hole contractor, you're looking at, you're looking at $1,000 a day.
Do you know what you spent last year on renting?
Not off the top of my head, but I can...
What's the lifetime of this type of machine? You talking, this is a five, 10-year machine, or...
No, I would, I would guess it's more of a 15, 20, or more.
I guess the payback is...
The warranty's pretty good here.
Okay. It's good for trimming along roadways, along the brush and weeds and so forth. If the board will indulge me for 30 seconds, we brought one in Templeton. And it was controversial. They took me out to see it operate for the first time, and they found this tree about 50 years old. They trimmed the, they had, trimmed the branches off. The machine go over, grabbed this thing and pulled the tree out. And the worker was standing nearby. He walks over to the hole where they pulled it out, reached out and brought a bottle of French cognac that apparently had been there for 50 years in excellent condition. We had it at the Christmas party.
So...
So you're saying we could find stuff?
The moral of the story is we should buy this so we can find stuff?
Yeah. I mean, they're great for trimming along the sides. Just have the metal detector.
And then the DEP came along and said, he took a tree out of wetland.
Take that bottle.
Treasurer, short-term debt, how much you want to pay on my credit card?
Currently, the short-term debt, which is the money we borrowed for the dump truck and the police radios, we paid about a third of it off. We have a current outstanding of $375,443. If we're interested in paying off, we can save, you know, on expenses. Not, the interest rates aren't high, but there are processing fees involved in renewing. So it'd be nice if we could pay it all back off, we'll see.
Have to say, you go with Dick's plan there, you look at the next year's debt projection then. Knock that off, drop the green metals debt. We've really reduced our debt by a third or more outstanding. You then have just pretty much the police station and the continuing minitalk debt at that point, right?
Stabilization?
Well, we currently stand at 1.264.
I remember recall you said like, they like to see us around 10%?
Yeah, so 10%, so, you know, we could put anywhere between $100,000 and $400,000 in there to be realistic, you know, we got.
And then what's left are, we're going to reduce the tax rate?
The balancing act, that's what the balancing guys do.
We literally, just tonight received these documents. We had very preliminary discussions about tax rate target. You know, Dick just worked up some preliminary numbers, and we have to have little discussions in terms of what we could gain in four. You guys, have you had any thought about the tax rate in terms of what it should be?
I saw clips, and I know that Dick said it was pretty close to what the number should be. I think if you look at last year, the initial projected one versus what it came out to be, there's almost that big gap. I personally would like to see the tax rate not go over 20. We're at 19.67. Yeah. So, I mean, realism is, as you said, Doug, the town voted an increase in expenses. You would expect the tax bill to go up. But we have the opportunity to mitigate it quite a bit with our revenue picture. So I think the wise use of money for expenses, one-time purchases, money in the savings account, and then reducing debt and some money against the tax rate, it's just a matter, with your advice, what's that number going to be?
Historically, the taxes have gone up about 2.5% when we're managing the town well. I'm hopeful that we can do that, or maybe even a little better this year.
Well, why would we raise the tax rate when we have a million, over a million dollars of free cash?
They, we don't...
But if we buy all these, if we buy all these things here, we're about over zero, right?
Um, no.
Well, you, if we don't, the free cash has, some of that's going to have to go to reducing the tax rate, or you're going to have a 4.6% increase.
Right.
So you've already committed at least a third of it just to...
Why are we having a 4.6% increase?
What's that?
How much does the budget go up this year?
Look at that sheet.
If we don't commit free cash to reducing the tax rate, we're going to get, with the current appropriations, we're going to have a 4%, 4.6% tax increase.
And I'm, and I'm asking, how much did it increase this year? The operations, the budget?
I don't know, we're not done yet. We still have another town meeting.
Well, what happened at the town meeting? How much was the increase?
No, I think with Dick's, with the current number of the April, sorry, the May town meeting, we're at 4. something percent up. If we don't take...
I should think so.
You're saying, if you think, if you look at projected tax rate that Dick sent out the Excel sheet today, 20.8, 20.6, something like that?
You are, I answered you because you said, why aren't we using the free cash to reduce the tax rate? And what I'm saying is, we're going to have to use a substantial portion of that to reduce the tax rate. Anyway, it's not a new idea. Otherwise, we're going to have a 4.6% increase.
And I'm asking, why are we having a 4.6%?
Because that's what you voted in May.
I don't think so.
Yes, you do.
If we leave these standards from May as they are, we don't touch it in terms of allocations, it would be 4.6%.
Because we're not done yet.
Right, I mean, we didn't make the adjustment to the police budget. We know that was going to go down a couple hundred, which would obviously knock some percent off of there.
What was the budget? The difference between '21 and '22 is 4.6%?
No, that's not what we're saying. '21, we finished the process. You haven't finished the process in '22 yet.
All is I want to know.
And finishing the process, they added free cash.
This is, I'm just asking, in May of 20, we voted X number of dollars at the town meeting. In May of '21, we voted X number of dollars at the town meeting. That was 4.6% difference?
That's not what it said. I don't have that number, I'll look it up for you when I get back to my office.
It's cost the tax rate to...
It's not that the budget did increase 4.6%, and then the tax rate increased 4.6%. Those things don't line up. Those things don't match. The impact of the expense was 4.6% on the tax rate. It doesn't mean that the budget went up by 4.6%. That's what, that's what you were trying to get right down.
Why is that?
I'll be happy to give you a quite big spreadsheet that shows you how it's calculated and with the historical data going back 15 years.
I don't need that, I just want to know about last year. So is that that 20.55% tax?
Basically, that's it. To pay for the money appropriate at the town meeting, less the revenue, less whatever, the tax rate would be 20.55. That would represent roughly 4.5% increase over last year's tax rate.
But that doesn't include the revenue that you put in last year from free cash?
Yes, it does.
The '21 rate does, the '22 rate, it does not.
Does not, '22 does not.
That's what I said, we're not done. So if you, now, the 19.67 was the adjusted tax rate after the actions of the fall town meeting. It would have been 20.15 something. So we're able to bring that down, we can do the same this year. And I think that's what, like you said, it's always the two-part process.
Well, maybe we have to revisit some of these expenses.
Mark, you've got a question?
This highlights for me how confusing this process is to the general public. So, because if this, we can't understand it without a lot of dialogue back and forth. I don't see how the town meeting understands it. And I've suggested in the past, and I also just once again, that every warrant article there have an explanation which says, this means your taxes will go up $200, $100, $10. I don't care what it is.
Nobody discussed this, I don't know how many times. And you can't do that because you don't know what's going to pass.
No, but if, somehow you can give them an idea. Otherwise, they keep going like this.
You can give a range, but you can't...
You can give a range, it will, it will go up between $20 and $10.
And once you give a range...
You're held to that.
You're held to it.
That's why we've been doing an explanation on the warrant articles, explain why we're...
This is what, this is what our state has developed as municipal finance. If it doesn't make sense, there's lots of other people to hold responsible for. We have to work within the system as it exists. It's confusing, but let's just...
Right, so you guys are going to meet on October 4th. Town meeting is the 18th. We'll close the warrant somewhere either the 20th or 27th. Fill in some numbers. I'm apparently the only one who doesn't understand, but it's fine.
I think you have a good sense of it, no? It's just, I mean, you look at the fact, actually, we already know, we already know without spending any more money, the adjustment on the police budget would bring it down right there to begin with, so...
Thank you.
Thank you.
What do we got here? We got two things to vote, two appointments to vote for the cultural council. Russell Verney and...
Ginny...
Virginia, Virginia Blake.
And Ginny has been a member.
Yeah.
But she'll be renewed, as she was. And Joe Verney is a genuine candidate, and is interested in this debate. We're very happy to...
I guess.
Who's on, who's on the board now? I know it's been, it's you, it's Ginny.
Barbara Quinn, Paulie Tuttle.
Okay.
Diane Mackey has to get off, because she's been on for a while. She's still going to tell the hours. And who else?
Betty was not, was she? Betty Howard was not?
Betty was, but she's been on for a while. So there's five now if we get Joe on.
Is there a limit, or just a working number?
I'm not sure that there's a limit, but, I mean, the more than merit actually for the group.
Yeah, so we have a motion.
We have a motion to renew, to reappoint Ginny Blake for the cultural council for a term ending in 2024, and to appoint Joe Verney, Chief Director, for a term ending in 2024.
Second.
Well, in favor? All right, we have selectmen reports. Selectmen reports.
I think we're all aware where we stand with the planning. We have a COA board meeting tomorrow, so the first one, they certainly don't have a meeting in August. There is a meeting for housing authority at the end of the month, but we're not able to get a form at the last meeting. And the Concom meeting, and you put back on the water project for... I think we had, we were going to have a capital planning meeting Monday, and Bob has pushed that to next week because of the conflicts.
County administrative, oh, excuse me. Uh, historical commission had their meeting on Thursday to go over the national register. Very informative session, a lot of input from citizens. Residents came and expressed concerns, and they took home a lot of good information, I think. They were very positive, responsible. Geographical area.
County administrative report?
Okay. Most of my time the past week has been involved with planning board vacancies in preparation of the special town meeting warrant. Police negotiations are underway. I did receive a call tonight at about quarter of six from the head of the union, and he said he was sending over an update on their proposals, which I will bring up in the executive session. We are approaching spending the ARPA funds, and we know several things about this. It is not required, there's no approval required from town meeting. We can spend these funds with the approval of the board and selectmen. And I guess we need to go up with a process for determining how we will expend the funds. Do we want to have a committee? Do we want to just have the board look at some options?
They have that forum.
Then why do we, didn't we have a town meeting vote to extend the money for the Main Street water?
Yes, we didn't have to.
Oh, that's.
Yeah. But I, we're also extending the district. Extending the district. We were talking about a forum, I think there's some disagreement about that. Yeah, I don't, I don't know if we really need a forum. I mean, I don't think we need to rush to spend these ARPA funds, we have. Well, we have until 2024 to spend the money.
There's no rush to say, hey, we need, we need to appropriate this money for whatever project. I think we need to see what come across our table and see what.
Well, I think, I, the only reason I would have the forum is to explain to people, many people just exactly that.
Okay.
And also to see what things that they might have to say that we might wanna spend it on. I mean, they might have.
I agree with Don, I thought that's how we left, always said.
They do it after town meeting, they do it after town meeting.
All right. I mean, that's basically it. I've already mentioned the gambling commission and that information. And we did meet with Whip City Fiber today. Actually, I think they more or less completed their work today, ready the foot switch. So they're gonna cut over probably tomorrow. And our, yeah, our relationship with Charter Spectrum will end.
What do we need to do to cancel with Charter? Because we're a month, a month of them right now, right?
The contract expires.
Yeah, it's a month, a month.
Yeah, it's expired, month, a month. So that's.
Anything else?
Yeah, Bob and I, Bob, don't we have a meeting tomorrow?
Uh, we do.
Yeah. For the, with the Ameresco.
And you mentioned the capital planning committee meeting has been moved ahead one week.
All right, the next item on the agenda is the discussed strategy with respect to collective bargaining with the police union. I would suggest we go into executive session as to do so. If not to do so, it'd be detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigation position. Detained a motion?
So, it's a break soon.
We're gonna read a verbatim here? Mr. Chairman, I motion to go into executive session to discuss the strategy with respect to collective bargaining and litigation. If open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigation position of the public body, and the chair so declares.
Second.
And we will not return to open session.
Don, I.
Don, I. Thank you, thank you, everyone. Good night.